Yes, yes. And Karen should be in there. Jane, go back up and sit.
I'm in California.
Whatever, we'll just go later then. Just go public service, government ops. Chris is not here?
Oh, I just heard the news.
Go ahead, I first. Nothing's wrong. It's time to feel a little lighter.
It is 5:30, 30 or?
Uh, 5:30, you got it.
All right, I'm gonna call to order Public Services and Utilities. And we're gonna skip down to number three, the Schenectady County Solar Consortium Lease Agreement. Mayor.
This has been a project that was initiated through shared services, the county and municipalities within Schenectady County. They went out for a proposal for implementing solar facilities throughout different sites in Schenectady County. General Electric came in with the best proposal. And what's in front of the council tonight is summary of that in some of the lease agreements to allow the placement of solar facilities on two of our sites in the city. And that point, I would turn it over. And I apologize, I've forgotten your name.
Do you want to throw in something? Right here is fine, if you don't mind.
This is televised through the local cable network.
All right.
The microphone is not for people here, but people at home watching. You'll be a star after.
Yeah, there you go.
So that being said, thank you, Mayor, and thank you for taking time to speak with you. So over the course of the last year, we've been developing the solar, or the prospect of developing solar across the county. Where we are today is we are developing, want to develop nine sites across the county, 27 megawatts of power, which works out to around 32 million kilowatt hours. So it's a lot of power. About two-thirds of the power will be allocated to the county and various municipalities. Another third of the power will be allocated to local taxpayers and small businesses. So all of the power that's created will stay local to the county area. I should make a point. We're not actually going to be selling you power, what we're gonna be selling you guys is credits. Power that we generate will go to the grid. The grid in turn then gives to the owner credits. Those credits are no different than your bond. So the analogy I use is really good bond for solar energy. What we end up selling you guys is a credit, pay us a discount to that credit. You use that credit on your utility account bills each month. So you'll save money each month, and these are 25-year programs that New York Sun and Isera has created, so they're long-term savings. So of the nine sites and the 27 megawatts, two of the sites are located in the city of Schenectady. One is on the landfill. The other one, I think, is on Main Street. Total is around six megawatts for your two sites. But because we're building at scale within the county, you guys are able to basically take excess power from some of the additional sites. Because you guys use 18 million kilowatt hours a year, we're gonna end up selling you guys or allocating 9 million kilowatt hours, so 9.6 million kilowatt hours to you a year. So the way the economics work is you're gonna pay GE for every one of these credits. Credit will be priced out at 8.29 cents per kilowatt hour. You're not buying power, buying credit. The credit just sold. So you'll pay GE 8.29 cents for every credit. Credit is worth 10 and a half cents on average. And I say on average because the credit fluctuates based on the type of utility bill and utility account that you have. I won't get into the nuances of this, though, I have a meeting with finance folks tomorrow. But if you have a demand account, you get a certain credit. If you have a non-demand account, you get a different credit. Different tariff, you get a different credit. So there's a lot of sort of puts and takes to the types of credits you get. But on average, the credit value that you will get is 10.5 cents for the 9.6 million kilowatt hours that we sell. So that's a 22 percent discount. It's a 21 percent discount, and it's a savings of 2.2 cents per kilowatt, which might not seem like a lot. When you do the math and you multiply it by 9.6 million kilowatt hours, it works out to 217,000 savings a year. 25-year program, we do is we escalate our rate to you by 1 percent per year, which might seem like a lot, but 1 percent over 25 per year is 2 cents. The rate that the credit will go up to, will go up by each year is anywhere between 1.2 and 1.6 cents. We've conservative modeled it, 2 cents, 1.2 percent. And so over a 25-year period, I believe your savings are $5.5. You guys save the most relative to consortium. I will make one note, consortium and the other various municipalities. In totality, if you were to look at the business case of these nine sites, it's around $460,000 in year one. And that doesn't include the community solar subscription stamping or offtake, which goes to local taxpayers, which is also worth an additional $100,000. So on that, probably a lot of numbers. I'll take any questions that you guys have. Like Mayor said, the goal for me is within the next 30 days to sign contracts. We're gonna sign two types of contracts. The lease agreement, which allows you to go build and operate these systems on your property. The second agreement is what's referred to as a credit purchase agreement. That's basically a power contract. And that power contract is the same as credits. The reason we want to do this in the next 30 days is because we want to build these systems this year. And that gives me about a seven-month window to build these systems. We've done a lot of the light work. We've done permitting, done our DC foreclosure work. We've also done a lot of deal just with utilities as well. So that'll make questions.
Questions? Mr. McGee?
Yes, this doesn't have anything to do with the financing. Maybe you can answer this or not, because I did get a call from a neighbor from Hungry Hill, and they were concerned when they saw the work going on. They're concerned that there's a screen of trees, at least on Torrington Avenue. Will they be removed for these solar?
So we've got our site plans completed, and we've mapped out what trees we are removing. I wouldn't be able to reveal which specific ones are removed or not, but give some back to you guys and give you a view on what's being covered.
That'll help, that way I can explain the trees. Because it does screen that off from the residents.
And from a safety standpoint, there's a bunch of solar in the county. Everything that we build will be fenced in accordingly to sort of NEC electrical codes, so there will be protections to the solar systems.
Other questions? Mr. Farrar?
How about the maintenance of these properties? Is that gonna be the city's responsibility or General Electric's?
So everything within the fence is GE's responsibility. We'll own and operate them. For landfills, it's a little bit different. You have your own responsibilities with landfill maintenance that you guys have, but the property itself, we maintain, at least within the boundaries.
With the cost savings that you incorporated, did that account for the loss in efficiency over time with the solar panels?
So it did. But this is the way it's gonna work. We're gonna produce a significant amount of power. And so although these modules do degrade by about half a point each year, we're gonna have excess power. So I actually anticipate that I'm not going to sell you half a percent less each year and sell you more, because I've got excess power, like in reality, if my systems do degrade.
And I guess any concern about glare? We're in residential neighborhoods, right? So has that been taken into account, any?
Yeah, we usually do glare studies when we're in proximity to airports. I'm not sure if any of the Schenectady sites, what landfill sites required us to do FAA glare studies, because there is a small part out there. But I can circle back whether that was required. If it was, we would.
Any other questions? Okay, so we're making a motion to allow you to go into contract?
Correct, for the lease agreement and placement of the actual solar panels on the sites.
But not the purchasing of the credits?
No, that's a part.
And that as well.
Okay, do we need two separate motions?
I don't know. Actually, some of the utilities rates, the utility doesn't require council approval on some, depending on what terms, conditions are. I should know that, but I don't.
Play safe, would I say if you do two resolutions, one for the lease and then one for the agreement for purchase of credits? And then we'll review all paperwork and let you know if it's necessary or not. You okay with that?
Okay. So, but one motion for both properties as far as the lease goes?
Yeah.
Okay, so you have a motion. Go ahead, Mr. McGee.
The landfill part of Hungry Hill area, how much of that landfill we can encumber?
Yeah, we're not encumbering the entire parcel. I've got the acreage by PB that we're using. Again, I do actually. That'll be in the contract. We'll do two things. We'll map out the acreage that we're using and for the landfill, it's a portion of premises. And then we'll also provide a site name as well.
Is your part of defense law separation laws?
Yep.
It's probably interesting.
It's a 2.5, I could do the battle of matters. 3.5 kilowatt system is probably close to 15 to 17 acres.
Okay, so I look for a motion for the mayor to enter into lease for both the Anthony Street property and the Cheltenham. Second, all those in favor? Aye. And then also a motion to allow us to purchase back the credits from GE for use on our utility accounts. Second, all those in favor? Very good, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Very good.
And now we'll move to accept bid award contract for the furnishing pipe for North Ferry Street, Forest Main project.
Sir, there you go, sir. All right, you should be done. Holy, holy.
Would you have a party for the purchase of the roughly 11,000 feet of 30-inch pipe for the Forest Main for North Urban Pump Station to the Anthony Street wastewater treatment pipe? Did two bids. It's in conjunction with the next one for installation. We did do the separate bid for the purchase of the pipe. It's more efficient by the pipe through the city of Schenectady and not getting contractor markup on the pipe. So the first is the purchase of the pipe, and then what we would do is transfer that unit cost to the contractor, so he gets arning the cost of purchase of pipe, resulting in some savings to the city.
I remember when, you know, when we were talking about this whole project, there was some grant monies that were coming in possibly and all of that. Is any of that part of this particular?
There is some grant money in this project. Anthony's already here, so we do have some grant money that's covering some of this. And some is coming out of some of our capital and some of our money.
So what?
Give me a break, and most of the grant money has gone for the actual pump station.
Okay.
Not the.
Well, I mean.
Right. We have three projects going on. We have the current project that the wastewater treatment, which is under construction, Forest Main, and the pump station. They all three can, obviously, the pump station has a new pipe, the treatment, and the treatment line has to take the additional flow that the pump station's gonna pump, because the owner have a, an out bypassing.
Yeah. Okay. Questions? Anyone?
Ms. Porterfield sent an email with some concerns about this contract. Did they get answered?
Not this particular contract. This is just purchasing the pipe.
Okay.
The next one.
Okay, so I need a motion.
So move it.
Second, all those in favor? Aye. And then accept bid award contract to North Ferry Street, Forest Main installation project.
Correct. We had three bidders, Schultz Construction, Reifenberg Construction, and Carver. There were three options for this. We allowed the contract. It's also had two options, and we had a contractor's option. Because of the difficulties going into the stockade, whether or not we would do direct burial, which is just trenching, direct burial pipe, or directional boring, which would be boring it under the ground and pulling the pipe through. Carver was the low bid for option one at $7 million? 261. And then the actual total bid would be the addition to the pipe, which is $9 million, transfer the, our agreement to purchase the pipe to Carver. So this total, it would go $9 million. And that option allows two things. They'll do direct burial, and then certain points, they'll have to do some directional boring or horizontal boring under railroad tracks, major intersections like Knot Street at the bike path, and then on Max and Road. Is then the option to pour underground, so we're not disturbing traffic for three weeks at a time and closing.
So yes, Ms. Porterfield did send an email with some questions with regard to Carver. The goals for the project are 23 percent as far as the MWBE utilization, which brings in 11.5 percent MBE and 11.5 WBE. And there are EE goals, DEO goals of 5 percent male and 5 percent female. So she wanted to have utilization plan, I guess has not been submitted to the affirmative action officer. Have you received that yet, Gardner?
Yes. The goal, the goal utilization, they just posed that stuff on the table.
Okay.
So it was really that thing. We just don't have.
Okay. And is there a reason we're not requiring them to meet that goal, Mr. Gardner?
That's not possible.
Is there a reason we're not requiring for them to come all the way up to the goal?
Well, it is. They're saying that, you know, they're trying to put their product, you know, reach the objective. But what they need to do at this point, once they go into contract, will need to submit, I mean, we have to, we, we, but, this is, um, allow specific to what they, uh, for active solicitation, opportunities for local, and very specific language, what they do to make that happen. The problem is, if they don't submit this, this is, this is what they have to, so now they have a challenge that, under the, so, 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 yeah. What is going to be, they have, this is, thank you.
So we're working closely with them to get them to. Other questions? And then we'll look for a motion. Second, all those in favor? Aye. Thank you. So any other business to come before Public Service and Utilities?
Move to adjourn.
Second, all those in favor? Aye. We are adjourned. Do you want me to just go into government operations?
Sure. Yeah, it's just.
Call government operations to order. Just one item on the agenda this evening, and that is a ceremonial resolution recognizing National Month for the Soup Kitchen Day, which actually happens all over the Capitol District, but it's really quite amazing. Hundreds and hundreds of people go out and volunteer in various soup kitchens, City Mission being one of them. So I'd just like some recognition of that wonderful token. Second, all in favor? Aye. Is there any other business to come before government operations?
Move to adjourn.
Second, all those in favor? Adjourned. Thank you.
Call to order Health and Recreation, and we have two items on the agenda. And of course, one is the arbitrage, that's three.
Yes, it's something we do every year, and it helps re- retrieve Schenectady from, so they promise to have a contingency there. Except for.
Any question?
Move it. Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Next item is the appointments to the Gulf Observatory Committee. Mr. Mayor?
And the list is submitted to the council, and I appreciate your consideration.
Any questions? We have a motion.
Move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any other business for Health and Rec?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Let's go to Finance, Jan, if we can, because we're still waiting.
Only item on the agenda is the presentation of 2019, 2020 proposed action plan and the call for a public hearing with Ms. Deok.
I don't, I don't know if that.
Might have to try.
So last time I had a meeting here, we had a good motion with that one, but.
Kind of like our cable TV.
But we'll move forward and. So every year, the city of Schenectady, as a participating jurisdiction, receives an annual allocation of funding, federal funding, for the Community Development SWAT Grant Program, CDVG, the Home Investment Partnership Program, and the Emergency Solutions Grant ESG Program. So every year, we do a plan that allocates an action plan for how this funding will be utilized, and it's based on following national objectives, which are to benefit low and moderate income persons, to aid in the prevention or elimination of slums or blight, and to meet community development needs having a particular urgency. So the outcome through this funding is that the city of Schenectady's neighborhoods are thriving, vibrant communities where residents and businesses are afforded viable opportunities to improve their quality of life. And there are four main goals that are attached to, when everybody submits an application for funding, they need to meet one of these four goals, which is to meet the essential needs for food, shelter, and safety, expand economic and employment opportunities, improve and expand affordable housing options, and to strengthen the neighborhoods in the city of Schenectady. So this year, the anticipated available funding, which has not been confirmed yet, for CDVG would be roughly 2.1 million. For the ESG grant, that would be 186. And for the Home Investment Partnerships, that would be 500,000. We actually use the numbers from 2017 versus last year, because last year we had a slight increase, if you might remember, and we don't anticipate that this year, but if it happens, it'll just be something to consider at that point. So in your package, you'll probably see what the allocations that we've proposed are. I'm not gonna go through them line by line tonight, but this is just a chance to get you familiar with what we've outlined in relationship to our goals. And we will be opening up the public comment period next Monday, April 22nd. So it'll be from April 23rd through May 23rd. But I will just go through quickly. So we have the Economic Development category, which just the only, the only subrecipient there is the Community Loan Fund of the Capitol Region. In the ESG section, this is pretty much consistent with what we've done in the past with our partners such as Bethesda House, CARES, and SCAP. For housing assistance, we had some joint applications between BNI and Community Land Trust this year, as they're kind of anticipating the merge that's about to happen between those two housing partnering organizations. So we've allocated some funding towards those joint efforts through the housing assistance this year. For Public Service, this is where we have our 15 percent cap, so it's the most competitive part of the action plan, and it's something that really have to work hard to prioritize, you know, what's really meeting, you know, our goals and stays below that 15 percent cap that we have. There's two new programs that you'll notice on the bottom. The first is from SCAP, and this is a Mount Pleasant Outreach Program. This is in connection with our Mount Pleasant school area that designated to really focus land bank and city efforts on redevelopment in Mount Pleasant. The second is the Work Group on Girls. And this, this program is really to increase school attendance, graduation rates, and in-school behavior. It's girl circles with education and support on matters like healthy relationships, interpersonal violence, teen pregnancy, school failure, and dropouts. So it's really just an intervention mechanism to bring girls together and have that support And we, this year, we put together the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Area in conjunction with a lot of the other initiatives that are happening in the Hamilton Hill, Vale, and Eastern Ave neighborhoods. So we designated that area to be able to have flexibility as well for projects that would not contribute to the public service cap that are within that designated area. So these are the three projects that we've funded through that so far, which, the new one, being from the Electric City Barn, which is a workforce development project, where the goal is to train 40 to 80 individuals through 10 residency projects that last from eight to 16 weeks. And these will be skills-based training programs in woodworking, metalworking, fiber arts, and digital arts. It will also create a database to connect these individuals with employers in the region should they need their expertise. So we're really excited about this project, not only because, you know, we're able to support it through the NRSA efforts, but also because they've also put together a lot of match funding for it as well. So CDVG is not gonna be the sole funder for that, for that program, which we always like to see. And then just moving along, Public Works. The only new project depicted here is from the Coco House Community Center, and this is basically just some funding that will help the rehabilitation of their facility. For admin, this is pretty much straightforward. And once again, we are gonna be opening the 30-day comment period next week with a public hearing on May 13th, room 209. If you do have any questions or want to see any particular applications, you can definitely, you know, reach out to me, reach out to Sylvia and Dan, they're also here for development, and we'd be happy to answer any questions about this action plan. So I think we just need to call for the public hearing at this point.
Is there any questions? Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion for the public?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You too? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're all in. As I said, you're up.
I'm up next? Okay, all right. Sorry. Thank you for adjusting the.
All we do.
All right. So I'm gonna open up City Planning and Development, and the first thing is the permit for Whistling Cattle. Chris Wallen, I believe, is here. Chris?
I wonder why I went from first to last.
Sorry.
Welcome to the club. First to last, but we made it to start.
This is a revocable permit for a sign that sticks out perpeticure from the face of the building at the Whistling Cattle, which will be in Destry and J Street. Christine Permianno Planning has signed off of it, with several similar signs of size and scale down on Destry and J Street. So motion.
Questions?
Move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is still Chris, Rose Garden.
This is a warbid and contract for the construction of, or the reconstruction of the stairs at the Central Park, Rose Garden. This was an item brought to you, I believe, a year ago. The reconstructed stairs as part of the master plan for the Rose Garden, using funding left over from the parks account, I.A., which would use for some playground equipment. The stair went out the bid, they came back. You see, the bids were wide-ranging. However, we do have one bid, which was by the engineer's estimate, which I provided, I provided through the letter from our consultant, Mary Moore. We also did call multiple references on this, one of which is a colleague of mine, the Highway Superintendent of Holman County, who I know. He works with them quite a bit. They are. They are, they're an emergency contractor for structures work. They did provide pictures of their work. Mary Moore did call other professionals in the industry, and we feel that we have no reason to not think that this bid is an acceptable bid.
Any questions? Ms. President?
So what we originally, what was originally put before us was about ninety-seven thousand and change, and now it's over a hundred and ten. We have enough money on that budget line, I don't
So we have other parks funds that we were under, specifically to a couple other projects. So I met with Anthony, and we went through them, and since we had the money, we thought to go forward with the project. It wasn't, it wasn't like, you know, the other bids would have put us right out, we would have been back to the drawing, but this one was close. And given some of the numbers that we have, we thought that would be in the best interest to just go for the project.
Okay. Any other questions?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then, Mr. Wallen, still up.
So this is a new contract for the city, but it will not be the first you're hearing about it. It's hopefully going to be an annual contract that, but it's going to go out, as you see now, before the paving contract comes to you, and it is for the crack sealing of city streets. I put in my backup information, we do in, crack sealing in-house. However, we do crack sealing in-house, it's primarily efficient if we don't do main roads. It is a lot of labor to do Union, Broadway, Erie, State. We would need, you know, maintenance protection of traffic plans, we would need crews to be out there, dust the dong for the efficiencies of it. There is a lot that goes into crack sealing on those mainline streets. So in line with things that other municipalities do, county puts out a bid, we actually use their bid as base play for ours. Other municipalities, the state, they have these crack sealing bids to go out. And we're going to be working with the group Hand Seal to crack seal our main roads. So I've met with Mike Serone, and how we're going to attack this is we're going to do as much crack sealing as possible with this group on our primary streets, and then Mike's crews, our in-house crews, are going to focus on all the secondary streets where we can close lanes, close the road entirely, and work faster, more efficiently, and safer for our, and put this on the contract. And like I wrote in there, crack sealing is the first line of defense for keeping our roads in shape. So you notice right now, we're not, we're not up to speed with what we need doing, so we're going to be going out there and really taking it to the next level maintenance-wise.
So this is going to cover how much?
Well, that's, that's what's yet to be determined. We don't know. So that's why this is a unique kind of bid. The bids are for prices per gallon. So we have a inspector that is going to be monitoring how much gallons we have slipped, take inventory of how much has actually gone. But the, the hard part with this is, I'm sure you've seen on some of the county, or even as you get into other county roads, is that, you know, a newer road may have one right up the joint that go, but then it go, for instance, I go up to Sack and Dog Lake sometimes, there are twelve cracks that they seal right across. So that one mile of road could have, you know, ten times the amount of volume as a newly paved road. So you have to go by this gallon, and that's why we just set a limit, a budget limit. We're going to use up to two hundred thousand dollars, see where that gets us, and then kind of monitor there. But as this is a new project, we're, we're going to be learning as we go. That's why also different from the county, as you see in the bid. You see, we have MPT. We just threw a number in there because we wanted to make sure that they had something to cover the fact that they have to do a substantial amount of maintenance protection for traffic for their, and we didn't want them to just put that right into the gallons because they may want to add on and do some other things. So like I said, it's a learning experience, this is different than a county road, we're going to be doing some main roads, but hopefully we get the result we want, which is our roads are going to last longer.
Ms. President?
So are we doing this by area, like you do the paving, or is this
No, we're going to do this by, so how we're focusing this is that you typically want to crack seal roads newer to older. So we have a program, I guess the list didn't make it in, but we have, you know, Erie Boulevard, which is relatively new, even the section we just did a year and a half ago, we'd like to start there. Union Street, which we've done, and we have, we have a map of mainline roads, they're called our priority streets. We're going to start, and start from, they're only one year old, and then we're going to just go back to five years. If we go to a road that's, you know, five, ten years old, we may spend a lot of resources there and not get the same impact as what if we do on Erie. So that's, that's right now is our strategy, is priority streets, if we're newer, we pave them, to the older, we pave them, to try to really get some miles done. And we're, like I said, we're just going to monitor and see how
So the test one will be Erie?
Erie's going to be one of, yeah, that's going to be the main test. Erie between Union and the roundabout, where if you drive it, you'll see that have some, it's usually the seams.
Yes.
And we want to really get in there because we want to get in there before the water gets in. Once the water gets in there and freezes, the road breaks apart.
Right.
So we really want to get in there first. So preservation is all about save what you can save and work your way down into the strategy.
Okay. Any other questions?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Next up, listed? You're still there. Properties to the City of Schenectady, Capitol District, Land Bank, cooperation agreement?
Yes, so the City of Schenectady and the Land Bank have a cooperation agreement that assists the city with the return of vacant abandoned underutilized properties to productive use. So we are requesting that the nine properties listed be added to this, to this cooperative agreement in order to facilitate, you know, the redevelopment efforts that we've been collaborating with the Land Bank on. Dave Hogan Camp is here from the Land Bank, as well as Mark Neer. I don't know if you want to add anything?
I just want to thank you all for your, your assistance, being able to take down partnerships with the City of Properties. We were funded for another two million dollars for 2019, 2020, and are giving new to our team. We're in the demolition business, so we're working close partnerships with the city team here at the city to make sure that we make a nice impact. You know, we're focused in Mount Pleasant this year, along with Forsyth. So we're some of the, you know, the worst light to take down. So this is the first group that we can enter, continue our work, and, and, you know, go play with the city if we can find a good use for the result.
Good. Questions?
Move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Next item is the appointment to the Land Bank.
Yep, and I got Aaron again. Dave, thank you for coming this evening, appreciate. Joseph Berlott, his, his appointment to the Land Bank has expired, and Mr. Berlott has expressed interest to once again serve on the Land Bank Committee. I spoke to Chair Richard Russo, and to Ray Galen, and state recommendations, well, Mr. Berlott has done an exceptional job, has served as a key member of this team, and we'd like to keep him on there and reappoint Mr. Berlott to the Land Bank.
Questions?
Move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Our next item is ceremonial resolution on our event.
Yep, and this is, comes from Schenectady County here on our event program, from the director, Bill Frank. And on Saturday, May fourth, they are going to be honoring Sergeant Worlinsky, Worlowski, Workowski, I'm sorry, at their event on Saturday, May fourth, at St. Luke's Pastoral Center on State Street, and we'd like to do a ceremonial resolution. Mr. Mayor, perhaps if you can do their proclamation that you already do for the veterans as well? We appreciate the support from your office for the sergeant.
Okay, and then the next item
Move it.
Oh, can we have, sorry.
Move it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry. And then the next item is a ceremonial resolution for the Greater Faith Education Center, tenth anniversary, and Ms. Porterfield's not here?
No, I'll move it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion recessed.
Second.
All in favor?
Not recessed, go into executive session.
No, it's a session.
All right.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are going into executive session.